Yeah. Same as back in, so.
That's right.
Yeah. It's probably a bit of a die. Part of the thing is just recently that was.
Wait, all these time.
Something. For it.
It's. That's on.
Yeah. Yeah, I feel bad if you ever left and just suddenly. About sharing. Here. And so. See. Yeah.
But it's not.
Which bowling ball.
Right, when she says that. Is maybe a little bit. She's like, she's gonna be. Oh, good.
Morgan.
Morgan.
That's Nate.
Nate's our first name. This is Bill.
Throw her into the cesspool.
I did my giant.
Okay, so. I think there's something. Saint Mary's School of Borders. Their expansion. I can begin. I think I have to ask for a special meeting if it's the biggest. Somebody in Javelin or word suggested having me set out. Just a judge.
I have probably two windows. Yeah.
I think it's actually the easiest.
No, it's.
In person. I was told by. Saint Mary's. We have three family. There's like. More.
Strange because now. But we can't know that.
It's really a sad.
Yeah. But the city is still. It's still questioning what we do. But I'm being to my husband.
One of the issues obviously, school felt. I think it's.
So.
Sixty. It was the.
Are you saying that that be.
I'm thinking it should be. Of course, they want to do it. I think that's, that's a big decision. It's sad to support this. It's for me.
Yeah. And also.
The answer is now expired, so there.
Because. What you're.
Yes. So she's troubling here.
It's still not six hundred degrees. They break up.
That's right.
I just love. Well, so. Right, in the building.
I don't think that's a solid. It's all the same. There are technically. Just told you. I don't want to. You know.
So there's a lot of.
Being some churches. She was. That's a totally. So. They're quite set up. Me, staff, sure. That this I would know. Just to discuss. Staff. They must be wrong. On the same story, he told them these two points out of support.
But I was saying.
They want, they want. I don't think it's the side of Saint Mary's School. It's really. So he was. Security design. Did this school.
Yes.
Yeah, it was strong. But it was. I don't mind being. These are your concerns. I don't think. Some of us. Strong.
He despite.
I, I know when she's lost. Game point. Later. Yes.
Good. Yeah.
It's pretty. Four times.
Sorry.
You're right now. No. So just so you all. You're racing. Not the duck. This might go over here, which is picking on. That's gonna. What is gonna live stream? Meeting is trying to. I'm trying to see. I'm recording right now, so some clients can actually. Don't have to come here. Some more people. I thought I had all. I've seen. Yes. What do you want to do? I would try to stream. It's ten minutes. I just want to be. Some. Friday. Fourth. With me.
Get a system. Thank you. So.
It's gonna be right there.
Oh, there it is. Change away. Swipe to.
Sorry. Swipe. Standing for. I'm sure. I, I have mine.
You guys can. I figured it out. Cause you know.
Yeah, I was saying, if she can't figure it out. All. Be back.
If I figure it out.
That's a live stream. Some like. So people can watch. Did you?
On our. He started on here.
Hey, I've been. I'm here again. Don't, don't be right wing up.
Funny.
Yeah.
Don't smile.
Like the part again, I mean glass everything. I'm, I'm feeling it.
Part of it.
It's, it's so cold in here. Before. Alright Connie, so just. Turn my eyes to. Still way long. She bring you. House.
That is driving me. Chair.
That is.
No, I am.
Yeah. Jeff's in the cover one. And some pockets. Yeah. Really. Spent it all these.
Yeah, you could. Connie, just get started. I've tried it several times now and the link must be bad or something. So. Sorry, I'll sit down. Check. Check, check. Can one of you say something, please?
Check, check, check. Willie, you guys check.
Yes, I just want to make sure it's picking up. This is the microphone's gonna pick everything up when we do stream, but for the recording too, it's important. Okay, and I should probably not be talking to you anymore, so.
Alright, great, so we'll call the order. Tonight, the Thursday, July first. Our district commission meeting. First order of business is to announce our next monthly meeting, our business meeting, excuse me. Thursday, July twenty second, noon. Our next commission hearing will be four P M. This room, Thursday, August fifth. Welcome back, by the way. Nice to see everyone. Apologize for tardiness. Swear in staff. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing. Truth. You. Introduction of commissioners present. Are we doing a little call?
Yes.
Jeff Pongonas present. Daniel Mather present.
Cynthia present.
William Gubis present.
Great. Can I have a motion to approve our minutes from the June third meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those.
We need to do a call. For the vote.
Now, I think so. Okay. There's gonna be a transition in my brain.
If you're okay. I can solve that's fine.
Okay. No. Any public forum issues today? No, thank you. Approval of staff. Approved applications. Kind of have a motion to approve. So moved. Q this. Other will say. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those. You. Okay, our first. First application tonight is BD twenty one oh seven oh oh two, number two, Blue Raven Solar on seven twenty three South Front Street. Sorry.
Think it's number nine south.
Oh, no, you're right. It's just. Twenty one oh six oh oh four B.
Do I have an updated. Oh, thank you. Yes, thank you. BD twenty one oh six oh oh four B for the record, nine nineteen South High Street, South Windmills out. You wanna kick us off, Connie, or? Oh, thank you. Swear you in. Break you right in, please, just so that, uh, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true.
I do.
Thank you.
Michael Kelly, they have Kelly Co- Kelly Companies.
And Joan Jennings on behalf of Fall Block. So this includes landscaping, new solar panel, storefront and windows. And U V windows also on east west working section of the building. This application was continued from the June third series of our line for the. Staff and officials to conduct a side, a side visits to the existing windows and a physical window sample of proposed windows. Landscaping and solar panels have been added to the application and the proposals were both appropriate. The solar panels will not be visible by street and the landscaping features are consistent with the character of the property. The proposed aluminum material for the office storefront and gray fiberglass windows for the north and east elevations. As the north, south orient. The front part of the building. Giving or reifying the original aluminum material and our appropriate. Installation of morning sky gray fell on a curve of fiberglass sliding windows on each elevation of the building will be the best of them. The gray color and the sharp black profile of the fiberglass is the most inhibiting character of the original windows. Two options could be considered as the best case for a building of this area. One being installation of vinyl sliding window in gray color. And the profile of the styles and rails will not be as flat and sharp as fiberglass. But the width of the styles and rail rails would be similar on a sliding. Number two, the installation of a vinyl window in white. Gray is not available. There's a full width aluminums with bold with aluminum screens with black screening material. The aluminum frames would have the flat, sharp lines of the original aluminum windows and in theory recovered the white vinyl. And that second option. What is actually being.
So the first option is not viable, right?
Option one.
What one would be. That it's not available.
I think, I think that it is. Oh, alright.
Option one was gray fiberglass. You are correct in remembering that when we last spoke, it was not available. We since found someone that does supply that. So, so that is new information for you. We had corresponded with Connie and that we are proposing to use that on the high street facing portion, but. But vinyl on the back portion. So it is available. We, we discovered that just recently. From one supplier. Uh, Pella. And it, yeah, Joan, Joan found it online somewhere and it's, it's taken up until yesterday to confirm that we could actually get it. We've, we've confirmed, the contractor confirmed we could get it. I still don't know what it would cost, but it exists in the world and, yeah. On the, yes. Street facade, yes.
No, no, I think that's fine. I was gonna suggest, we've been through. We've chatted a few times. I don't think we need a rehash here. We can sort of take. The points, is that a good way to go through this today?
It's more south portion of the building is the most. Visually relevant. Terms of mid central. Not the street face, not the, the.
Not the back street south side.
But east west is the backside.
He is saying.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that runs north, south. Got it.
Alright, agree.
I'm sorry. Sort of terms that I can get. The high street facade is the most relevant in. Not the block of.
Right.
Right, not the block behind, right, alright, I agree.
Okay, so. Let's catch up with our, with our details. So. You're asking for approval of the white vinyl with aluminum screen. Is that correct?
Yes. I met Daniel, Connie and developers onsite discussed. The options, looked at up close the windows that are back there. The building already has on its backside, which is the south face of the east west portion, white, white line. Yeah. I think. Yeah. Due to some major cost considerations of the, of the north side. He came up with the idea of putting the screens and the natural aluminum and a dark screening material, hopefully black. To attempt to camouflage. The white. White. That was kind of a major discussion, was it not?
Yes.
Just straw. Oh, we were generally agreeing with that.
We generally agree with that for the long. Hotel block.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
And. I wasn't able to attend the business meeting. Dave Perry indicated there was a discussion of millions in the screens. Was it? Yes, just what, and we can do that, so.
I think that.
Yeah. Okay.
But they're also talking about.
Yeah, it's trying. I'm going through, I'm using Connie's notes as my cheat sheet here. Okay, so then the next issue Connie, I'm working in reverse, is the installation of morning sky gray Pella. And that is. Along the north, south, the high street facade.
Yes, just facing.
And then also the, the window that is on the upper portion, that is on the north facade.
Right. We're all feeling like that's the right solution.
It was a good thing it picks up the color we want. The profile, profile is not exactly as clean as the original, but it's very close.
For a black.
Right. Okay. Good. Next is working through the aluminum material from the office storefront. Why not? Let me understand that one time.
Well, if you took what's on the big monitors there now. It's the typical, you know. Aluminum, natural aluminum, you call it anodized aluminum.
Clear anodized.
So that's what we've been there in the first place. So it's a little bit different location.
The intent is to match the color and all the better knows.
Well, actually. The intent is to match fiberglass to the anodized.
Right. Yeah.
But also that flash are no.
Okay. Fantastic, it sounds like we're all in. It's here and solar panels. Is that next on our agenda?
What we've done since our initial conceptual discussion was take them off of the high street side, so they would not be visible at all from high street. They're only on the, the south portion of that long stretch of the building, you wouldn't see at all. And then.
So this, this is high street.
Yes.
Do you have a. Inside.
We do not have that.
But those would be, those would be visible, but if you're.
These ones, you know, really, really, really small written down. You might be able to pull it bigger on there. It's, I mean, it is a, it is a PDF on there, but I mean, they are.
And they are as drawn individually mounted, not as a bag.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, for me. They are visible. From that interior part. I think you're wondering what it looks.
I want to be visible like this.
I think there's a dimension string up there. Your end was right by. It's a millimeter. Right. There it is. So thirty five millimeters would be the, the depth.
Yeah.
That would be, that's like.
But they probably have a mounting bracket.
Right.
Sets them up off slightly. So you're probably talking more like three inches. So.
And they're not angled, they're just bouncing through the slope. Parallel to the room.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah. These panels, we're, we're gonna have to be dealing with this more and more. Our guidelines don't really discuss these. And obviously the trend is moving that direction, so we're gonna.
I'm personally comfortable with the location that these two panels are in and, you know. Based on my own knowledge in terms of the profile, whether it's, you know, three, four, five inches, I'm, I'm okay with that. As it's shown here. I, I assume that if you're coming north on High Street from the south, that you might get a peekaboo view of these panels.
It would be a very brief. There's a structure. That blocks. Just two stories. If, if you get a little view, I'd be okay.
I don't get, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so I think we're. We're gonna work this issues closed. Okay. So. You're, you also referenced landscape here and you have a very simple landscape up front. I think that, you know. You know, meets the. Basic intent here, I would suggest you keep it clean and simple and. Don't overcomplicate it.
Okay. That's the intent on that left side, yeah.
You had mentioned down the road, may additionally do some additional painting in the front in the lawn area. If.
Yes.
If you have. The need for it, you'd have to come back from that.
Yes, exactly.
As a commission, we have, we have really encourage activity in the street, so.
Yes, and that's still in the works, but yeah, we would come back if we, if we. He, he's referencing putting seating over on that left side, which right now is shown as grass. That, you know, there's, there's always a question on these of whether you do a, some sort of bar as an accessory to the hotel. And if it, if it went in here, it would probably be right there where the office is. And they would need outdoor seating, but obviously we'd be back to you for that.
And it would be for patrons only.
Yes, correct. Yeah. Right.
Okay, with that. Does anyone want to make the motion? I would suggest Connie that we could make a motion that aligns with staff. Recommendations. So as to not read through that whole list, if that worked for you.
That's fine, but I just wanted to, for the record again, say that staff's opinion. That the first option would, would be, the best option would be to use the Pella and Furby of fiberglass. So I would suggest that you say that whichever option that you're gonna use. The one that they're asking for. Number two, it's a test case. So that you can actually see.
Fair enough.
Why vinyl is visible or not. If it is, this is gonna be.
It's not somebody who are.
Right, so that's your point three or point four? I'm sorry, all these windows, screen issues are. Got it, so, okay, so.
Where it says two options could be considered, number one is what they're asking.
Yeah, but, and you say test case.
I mean, sorry, Miss Bill.
Yeah, it's number two.
You also said test case. So I'd be like recover.
Yeah, I think it's important to point that out.
Right.
Does someone want to take a crack at that motion?
I hope that we align with the staff recommendations for this application.
And on point four. Underline the test case. And on point four, underline the test case, option number two would be a test case. Option number two, and the screens would have a, a, in middle divider, vertical divider.
Yes, middle, yep, that's correct.
My second. Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Close. Thank you, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Now.
Okay, new applications, uh, now we're on to BD twenty-one oh seven oh oh two for the record, this is seven twenty-three South Front Street, Blue Ray, correct?
Yes. Who want here for that?
For the record. Uh, seven twenty-three South Front Street, is anyone present? Okay, uh, move on.
I guess we can do that and then go back to it, and I would feel comfortable with you acting on that.
Okay, well, we have a short agenda, why don't we skip ahead, okay, great, uh, so then we'll move on to, uh, item three under conceptual applications, BD twenty-one oh seven oh three for the record, one forty-two West Whittier Street.
How's it going?
Hi, afternoon.
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 Square you in, please, raise your hand, now let's tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, your names for the record.
I'm Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney with Smith and Hale.
Daniel Lehrer is principal with MBBJ Architects.
Thank you. Connie, would you like to kick us off?
Uh, for conceptual review for this development. Uh, new construction, there's one of three, proposed six-story development, five constructed with residential apartment units above a structural garage level, development to include approximately eight hundred fifty thousand square feet, with approximately nine hundred service by units, community areas, and parking, and at this point of the conceptual review, we're basically just doing some background information. Uh, Whittier Street Peninsula is bounded by the Scioto River on the southwest, north, by railroad tracks on the east, additional parkland extends south, Green, Greenmont Avenue, to the east, Whittier Street connects with the Irving Ridge pattern and the mixed residential commercial architecture of the Brewery District and German Village. Other than Whittier, Peninsula includes River Street along the Scioto, Scioto River, um, and a per nonlinear fireplace. Historically, my niece is on the Whittier Street Peninsula, revolved around transportation and transportation dependent industries. In eighteen seventy-two, the Columbus and Hocking Valley Railroad operated a warehouse and several tracks, by nineteen twenty, the road expanded to include a large railroad yard with various maintenance buildings and well of the twenty-five tracks, the Frankl Fire, fireworks, approximate site of the existing class of warehouse operated on the peninsula for years, other times the industry is included brickyard, stone works, and lumber yards. Whittier Street Peninsula is currently largely characterized by the parkland of the Scioto Autobahn Park, including Autobahn Center, Bird Sanctuary, facilities, dog park, and park offices, the former Lazarus Warehouse Building is being redeveloped with a number of small businesses. In regard to the Whittier Street Peninsula, the goal of the nineteen ninety-two Brewery District Plan was to redevelop an unsightly area in the heart of Columbus into a special district, providing opportunities for unique recreational facilities and downtown houses, while preserving the natural character of the Scioto River corridor. Mission bestowed has been continued during the last fifteen years of development work and due to Scotty Biden's great history of permission.
Thank you. Turn it over.
I'll do a little quick introduction, um, we started this project in two thousand and nineteen, um, the property, hmm, good timing, yes, I excuse myself, I'm probably a little rusty, this is my first in-person meeting in fifteen months, actually wore long pants, spoke to my shorts.
I forgot to put my.
It is, it is different to do this. The property is, is owned by CSX, and if anybody has dealt with the railroad, you know that they're a challenging organization to do anything, and so we had to deal with them, we had stormwater issues that we've been dealing with the city, and also, um, we had to recently deal with ODOT, um, ODOT with their downtown construction project, uh, had proposed an access that would go, uh, the length of, of this property in, in order to get to the freeway, uh, that would delay what we were doing, and my client was able to sit down with ODOT and CSX and work out an upgrade crossing at the north end of the property. Uh, that does two things, one, it keeps all that traffic off of the, the Whittier Street, and also, um, keeps that traffic in, in terms of our overall development at the extreme north end of the property, so that was beneficial. The development that you're seeing now, uh, partly is, is a response to our discussions with city in terms of stormwater, um, this property, including the Metro Parks, was not in the floodplain until the city built the flood wall, uh, and then somehow this got flipped and that area got dry and this area got wet. Um, the government, as you might expect, is behind in terms of updating those plans or anything, and there isn't anything in the future, um, that would say that they are gonna update, even though that they're past their normal date when they would be doing that, so we have to deal with what it shows on the map, and, and so the proposal we have now, uh, reflects our answer to the stormwater question. Uh, the other thing, in terms of the last fifteen months with what's happened to COVID, um, our original development had a significant portion of office development, but that market has disappeared, um, so we are looking at something that, in terms of my client, who's done a lot of mixed use in the past, something that they can do, because if you're gonna buy a piece of property, you want to be able to develop it. Uh, we've had discussions with the city planning department, uh, and economic development, there is still possibility for office development, we are proposing a phased development of this property, so if the world changes, or if the city has somebody that's interested, that is something that can be accommodated, and, you know, we will go into greater detail as we move forward on this development. So, what we wanted to do is update you in terms of our current concept, get some, uh, feedback on this proposal, uh, this is the same thing that we've done with the traffic department, uh, the planning department, sewers and drains, and, and also our closest neighbor, which is Metro Parks. Uh, we've had in-person's meeting with them, and I had a, a conversation this week with, uh, the director, Tim Maloney, just to kind of get their feel and, and discussion, and explain to him what process that we're going through, and that this is just conceptual, and we're looking at this point for feedback.
Perfect. Well, appreciate the time, uh, for everyone to, to come today, um, I'll go through some of the high-level pieces of it, um, as you can see on the screen, a number of the different, uh, views from, uh, way that the site, uh, I guess is pretty current, is, is at. As was stated at the beginning, uh, this site in this location, uh, falls in a, a rather interesting spot, uh, between the park and the downtown brewery district, uh, divided by the railway and other, uh, properties that are, uh, that are there, and is a, um, I think to, to the larger master plan idea here is bringing some, uh, living to the downtown, or, uh, downtown living to the, to the peninsula, and so, um, our proposal, uh, if you can flip back to that, um, starts to address, uh, some of this, uh, opportunity that we see, um, of bringing people living in the park, so on this view, you can start to see our proximity to the park, or, or, I would say gap that goes then to the brewery district, but really this opportunity of a, uh, a site that allows you views back into the city, views into the park, and really bringing some activity to the park and living, uh, and, and really starting to create more activity in this area, I think has a lot of value and a lot of opportunity. Uh, go to the next, yeah. Yes, yeah, yeah, hundred percent. They're just the entities within that, the larger brewery district area, I, I agree, I pre, uh, appreciate the clarity on that, um, and so the idea around continuing that, that, uh, the opportunity for people to live and play and, 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 uh, in, interact with this area, I think is very important. Go to the next. Um, and so, this, this is, uh, the last time I were here, this was an aerial, uh, photo that, that we had used to kind of show the overall existing context in that area, if you go down to the next page, you'll see some updated.
Hey, Daniel, just for clarity, maybe. For me and for everyone in the audience, the area that we're looking at is what's currently wooded, and I'm not suggesting that that's a old growth forest or anything, but just for scale.
Yes.
Or just so that we understand what we're talking about is that area itself.
Correct, and those, those walkways are pretty much a good way of like, that's the edge of the metro parks, and then you go in, what's interesting is why we showed the older and, and where we're at is that what looks like a very dense forest now, when you look at it, uh, even, I mean, without leaves, but it's actually, um, pretty open now.
Sure.
Um, so it's, um, it's a, it's changed a bit over, over its time, lot less trees, uh, and, and just gives you a sense of what's there currently, it's not really a park-like setting, it's not really, um, a place that, that people are going into, um, and utilizing today.
Just, sorry, one more question, just, I don't know if this is relevant, but who owns the property now?
CSX.
It is still CSX.
Yes, we, we are, we are in contract with them, and, and that was another issue that we had to deal with, because, you know, with everything going on, we had to get a contract extension to give us enough time to move forward with the revised plan, and we were able to accomplish that.
So, yep, no. Um, so we'll scroll down, pass the views, which now we get to kind of the master planning, um, ideas, uh, that we've, we've continued to develop. Um, this, this original concept we had with the idea of the city view versus park view, and that how the site, uh, really straddles that, and is starting to take advantage of both of those opportunities within the site, and there you can kind of see the darker green zone is the site, um, and its, its unique shape, uh, that we've been working with, um, and it does, the, the edge of the metro parks comes right up to it, so, um, a lot of, uh, development and understanding of how that will interact is something that will be coming, a lot of this initial study is on that master planning, what are the opportunities within the site, uh, for it, from a development side. So, go to the next. Um, access points, two, two main points that we're continuing to work on, uh, from a vehicular and pedestrian, um, bicycle path into the project, a main access point to the south there off of Whittier, uh, that comes into the site, um, and is one that we will continue to, uh, work on from a traffic standpoint.
And for vehicles, you will, you'll have a second access point over the north end?
There is an access point.
Yeah, there, there, the, the one at the south end i- is actually, uh, where they have the cert, the, um, what we're talking with Metro Parks is they have a service drive there, and, and we're talking about trying to get access there, improving that as being our main access, because what we would like to do is once you cross the bridge, any traffic we would have, we'd like to turn there and go into our development. The other access is the public street that goes back to the Bischof Warehouse, and we have access to that at the north end of the property, so, just in terms of being a, a good neighbor, the, the more cars that we can get to turn at the service drive, assuming we can work that out with Metro Parks, the, the better off it is, because the other one, you drive by and you're gonna go by everybody walking back and forth and everything.
What about pedestrian?
I would think that as part of what, of the city, that they would want us to have sidewalk connections.
Correct.
Coming in from Whittier and everything.
Part of the project, right?
Right.
Site is essentially. Positive for the brewery district if it's not connected to it, so I would just stress to the state of the city as much as possible that we.
Yes, and that, that helps with all the development, it's what, if people want to live there, if they have that connection without it, it, it starts to become more difficult, for sure.
Is, in light of the seventy-seven in one group, is there an ability to get at least a pedestrian connection from the north side of the site, I mean, far north, isn't there an after?
We, we, we have talked about that, but, you know, right now, I think, how long ODOT has that access, for how many years? Five or ten years in terms of the road and construction, but there is an ability to go under seventy.
Yeah, you can actually reach the pathway, if, from a pedestrian, you can reach the path on the underside of it, you cannot go, uh, across the tracks and into the, uh, up into downtown, but from a bicycle or pedestrian access, we can get that from that location.
Okay, good, that's, yeah, sorry.
No, you're good, it's good, good questions, uh, it's a complicated site, it's, it's, yes.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, but what's embedded in my thinking is, let's leverage the power of this, that's up to the north end if possible.
Right.
That would be a huge, that would be a great outcome of your project to the public's benefit.
Yes, more access to the peninsula, I think, it helps everyone.
Yeah. I don't know if we talked about it last time, too, but maybe it was separate conversation I had, but Blackstone, Looting, Sycamore connecting to the site, is that a possibility?
Um, not by ourselves, I mean, that, that would require a major financial commitment by a variety of parties, we looked at that when we looked at this originally, and, you know, for the, for this developer to do that by himself, then the numbers don't work. Um, I mean, that's something that we'll continue to have discussions with traffic, uh, because there was some talk about a bridge, but, and again, that, that's a dollar and, and another conversation with two different railroads in order to accomplish that.
Yes, that would be a great connection across, um, both from, uh, connecting the brewery district to the peninsula, but then also back into the brewery district area, and more of that density, so, okay. Next, um, so, it, this, this starts to outline, um, a little bit of the understanding of the massing, overall planning, uh, configuration that we're looking at, um, the phasing of the project here is also highlighted below into three phases, um, we, the way we approached this was looking for, and we call it, I call it a module or a pod, um, similar design to what we did on, on Gravity, which, uh, over in Franklinton, where we're trying to find, uh, repetition within a, a singular design that we can utilize across the site, but in a way that makes it look like it's a number of different buildings and a, a different breakdown, creates repetition, creates opportunity, um, within the development for efficiencies, but also gives us, um, a, a module to work from, from a parking standpoint to a, uh, to a overall building design. The two first phases would be towards that main entry coming off of Whittier, uh, to the, uh, kind of southeast of the site, um, second phase moving towards the park, and then the last single phase of phase three there, so if you're in the next slide, you can start to see it a little bit more zoomed in on those three individual sites, and timing of each phase, uh, I, I mean, uh, depending on, depending on success, right, and lease rates and, and how that, that continues to move, um, it could be, I mean, because construction on, something on phase one like this is designing construction in two years, um, it depends on if those lease rates are go, if lease is going well, the second phase could kick out. I actually, it would be an interesting one to lay, to see it by itself, and see how that starts to lay out, um, and the opportunity, or what the site improvements could be to where phase two and phase three would be, long-term, um, if they have, have opportunity for other park-like areas within. Right, yes, as an overall development, we always want to see it fully built out, but need to understand the. Yeah. Go to the next slide, here's just a couple of the views, um, just of the massing, this was just really trying to understand scale, uh, size of the project, we have more detailed images as we move on, uh, next one. Um, this is how the parking starts to lay, and again, you can see that continued module efficient parking below the, the buildings, um, this is to help raise the buildings up out of, um, some of the floodplain issues that were mentioned earlier, uh, which we're still continuing to work through. And next is then the first floor, typical floors, uh, residential layouts, the interesting opportunities that we see with this, the design, is we're, are opening up and minimizing the number of really units looking directly from one unit into the next, and so, um, we've purposefully laid this out in a way that is all about, as, as I said from the very beginning, the city view and the view back into the park, um, and there's probably, uh, over two-thirds of the, the units will have views out, with only the last third really looking into that in, inside courtyard, which is still a nice space, uh, but really minimizing that, um, you know, too much of the density and too much of, of, um, people looking into the next unit. Average is around eight hundred and fifty square feet per unit, um, with a mix of Average is around eight hundred and fifty square feet per unit with a mix of, you'll see on the corners of the darker blue, which are the two bedroom units, taking advantage of those views out. One bedrooms and studios throughout. And next page shows a little bit of how these pods are were designed. So you can imagine at the very top, if we had just done long linear bars on this site, how really kind of tough that could be. So really very simple move of just one little kink to the building and then repeating that twice on on one of these pods. And that green pod is a is a perfect as efficient parking that we can do below it. So we're creating efficiency, we're creating a unique layout to the buildings. And then as we go into the actual, starting to look at the articulation of it, you can start to see how the the opportunities of this configuration looks much more broken down, but that these pods are continue to be repeated throughout the site. And again, a couple of years, let's move on to the other, there's some more views here, some precedence of just kind of general look, you'll see Gravity on the left there, ideas of greenery and outdoor space that people will have access to. The park area, how does how do cities, I mean, these are big towers in the park, but really understanding how the park and the this development is going to come together. I think is is something we would continue to study and look at. And then these are a little bit more of the articulation and and size and scale. You can slowly kind of scroll through these, you'll see we're we're screening the parking right now with it could be an artistic screen to it, it would be open air, parking garage below, which allows for natural ventilation. But here you can start to see and and again, that that sense of how the park and this parking garage and the overall building starts to work together is something that we would continue to work through. Different opportunities of coloration on the buildings darker and lighter to create these is almost looking like individual different buildings within the site. That starts to break down the scale. And balconies for each of the units, some of them kind of pushing out, sometimes they're pulled in, again, helping to break down that that look.
So you're anticipating mostly you would have some kind of balcony?
That's where we like to start, it's a typical important piece for people as they're renting. It's a, it's something that we we always keep in mind. And so always looking for opportunities for that especially, and maybe the balcony is out towards the park, maybe larger for for better views out that way. I mean, we'll continue to look and to develop that, but this is the initial to give you a sense of scale and overall look for the project. So that's a lot of, a lot on a very complicated site. I think a lot of great opportunity to bring a number of people down into this area and to create, I think, a unique development that continues to grow the brewery district.
How do you see the reg- relationship from the platform, the raised platform we're building to the the park level? How see that working?
So what's interesting, what's interesting and maybe the aerial view shows it, you'll see I we put a lot of, I I put kind of brown decks. But the idea that there's there's a, I'll call it a little bit more private space on these upper terraces that are for the for the tenants that live there. But the ground plane we see is opening up to to more of the the park and the overall area. But the ability for for people to get outside is is really what we're we're trying to create. How much outdoor space can you you get to and allow people to have that access? There are two smaller pavilion buildings that are the amenities buildings, get at pools and other access and things more within the development. But the the, so there's two pieces to it, though, the also with raising up, we're above the tracks, elevated a little bit above the railroad tracks, which as we we found on even with Gravity over in Franklinton, the train going by doesn't really bother people, it's actually nice, but we're we're kind of getting up above that, so you're not really looking into the side of the hill. And just trying to find ways that we can bring landscaping up, access down, we'll have to look at ways from from a kind of a security point of view of how access from that, those podiums could be accomplished.
Particularly on the south side of the street, definitely line of those, so what do you think the streets could?
There's a good shot, I think, on the inside, if you scroll up. Yeah, so this is I mean, from from my sense, it's what I'm always looking at is, oh, well, the interesting part in my mind is it's got a sense of there's a density to it, but it's actually got some space. I'm not, I'm not too concerned about the the overall long faces of these, I think we've tried to minimize the length of the building, given the size and scale. But as a, you know, for a a development like this, I think, I mean, I feel like it feels pretty good with the with the greenery and the spaces there.
Just encourage you to address the street, make it a little bit more walkable.
For sure, I actually, I mean, between scooters and, you know, pedestrians and and bikes moving through this area. I think, you know, dedicated lanes, dedicated places for that is going to be needed.
I'd build on your comment a little bit, can we, Daniel, to the extent that you can, can you help us understand at least as much as you know right now, the stormwater elevation and how that impacts the first floor of occupiable space for your building, tracking that?
Everything that we're working on on the floodplain is no occupiable space in the floodplain. And so what we are
Do you know it yet?
The elevations, I need to look at the exact numbers, but we are depending, I mean, there's we have three or four strategies that we're working through right now, trying to find the right one. The balance of the cut and fill that has to happen to the elevation that we can't go down because of needing to pump the water back up and in a flood situation, you can't pump it out. To, we're testing ideas of even moving up above the or moving the parking above the high or not even above the floodplain, but up high enough that it drains out into the site. I wouldn't say we have a true strategy around it, but the the different ways we've looked at it's getting, we have to get eight feet up. That's basically where the floodplain line is from grade.
And so in diagram, if you go back to the project images, I don't know, right around, but what you're saying is your finished floor, your current thinking is that it has to be plus eight feet from
From the current grade, that's there, yeah. And we're currently going above that, I think we're about a twelve foot, twelve to fifteen foot for that initial podium to get it up out of that.
Sort of, this is going to sound dramatic, I'd be surprised. I would say the fatal flaw for me is that the entire ground floor is the parking garage environment. And I know you, I'm not surprised that you did that, but so like, my mind, not having to struggle with the issues like you are. Can we cut to get some earth so that we can
Bring some humanity?
Mount like, like a completely different, like not an urban strategy, like the middle of Manhattan, but like somewhere, but you know, a more landscape oriented environment where you've got you know, earth coming up to the building to try to soften the garage or push the garage. I really want the ground floor to be as close to zero as possible. You want a public space? I definitely want a public space, yeah. I don't care if it's public or private up there, because I know how that all works out, is that what you're getting at? So I'm not too concerned about that, what I'm concerned about is when you're a human, if you're walking on the ground, everything in your browse line is parking garage. And we all know the challenges of that, so I guess you could over landscape it, you could drop some lobbies down, you could do some architectural things. I think that's the fatal flaw that you have to deal with from my perspective in terms of making it livable, that to me is a huge one. So I hear you guys are trying to balance cut and fill and deal with all the chainsaws in the area, but that's the one that I struggle with the most.
No, it's it's a great point, it's something we haven't represented in this, I mean, a lot of this was really just the initial, we haven't landscaped it truthfully. I mean, we've we've taken a shot at getting the buildings and what's our building and our yield and then start to look at what are the opportunities and how bad is it? I think there are ways that that vegetation and greenery can screen it, and it's something that we will look at.
We have Kaufman's deal on across some White Castle, right, like pretty good looking building from five hundred feet away. But when you're walking around on site, that for those in the audience, it's all built. And to me, it's just, you know, tough. And in this case, you're sort of committing to building a neighborhood and the neighborhood really counts on the ground floor being contributing.
In an environmentally remarkable site orientation, the people can bring to a table, have that limitation.
Yeah.
It's going to be more attractive to that.
Yeah, it seems to be in conflict, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah. And if we could do what we want to do. That's the thing, the, right, no, I understand that, but unfortunately, you know, you your your organization is one of the permits that we get. And if you bless it and I can't get Greg Fentner and Stormwater to say we're okay, then, you know, we wasted everybody's time. But we understand that and, you know, the part of what we've been trying to do for the last fifteen months is is to say, Greg, you know, what can we do? And and that hasn't proven that successful. So, you know, we are now, you know, delivering on them and saying, this is how we're looking at it now, you know, will you approve this? And we can include in terms of what you all are talking about to see. Yeah, but I don't have a Stormwater permit stamp in my office, I've got a few stamps, but not that one. Yeah.
So can I?
The design, building design elevations for the size forms of these buildings pay homage to the the history, the character of of what was there, shapes, the forms of the buildings, the the industrial feel of the buildings, the railroad tracks.
I just noticed, Connie, I didn't realize all this, in terms of photos, there need to be some sort of homage to this in some element.
Well, they're bent towards more industrial appearance and the use of color certainly helps that. I don't want to turn it into a visiting land of reproducing less than a turntable, whatever that round bag is, and be a community building.
I used to actually have a round building as our amenity building. I actually, from all the old photos we had, it was just, it looked like a parking lot before, we didn't have the the previous information.
Fortunately, it is disconnected, it's not any connection. Shouldn't you reflect something that doesn't matter to anybody? I think a nice nod to the industrial materials would be good.
Not surprising, way and mobile, let's just be there, particular history perspective, I think it'd be great to do something, but I don't, I'm not looking for this. And you know, this is just, you know, for preservation, that's what we do. All the time is what we do, even though these buildings are gone, they've been gone for a long time. When we do something like a street name change, if you ever see a street name changes. We get the developer, even though maybe the site is not, hasn't been, you know, the character of the site we've been gone for ages. We ask them to do something like, put a plaque up or something like that, do some re- or do do a writ of paper that we would get and library gives, some just something like that, so that, you know, I mean, after this, definitely this is going to be on for her. So documented in some way, physical, you know, some plaque or some sort of
It would be nice to do some cultural storytelling as a part of a thousand unit project, on stroke.
That's good.
I'll build on the architecture thing, so Daniel, this is like Scandinavian architecture meets German engineering, which is kind of Think about it, give it inside your head, um, the logicary of German. But I do worry a little bit that there's one architecture, however many building forms you perceive. So I just wonder if even within the palette, there isn't some differentiation. There may be a material nod to the Audubon, not not to you know, mock it or use it as a serious point of inspiration, but maybe there's a tie, I don't know.
Sure, could be balcony rails, it could be coloration of different aspects, yeah.
Would be nice if this place had an identity, since you like you said, it's disconnected, but I don't, I don't know, it needs to look like the Audubon, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I think that's an important point, though, that if it all becomes modeled like that materially wise. It it needs to have, right, and there's an obvious, you know, historic reference.
Wayfinding becomes an issue too, like you're the pit building down and you're looking, I have no idea, so yeah, no, those are all good thoughts.
What's that? What do you mean?
Just because I think it's it's now by cars, you're saying.
Right, yeah, right, right, right.
And I think that site is, again, I come back from ecological, so the people celebrate that site for its ecological
Yeah, leaving that story into your site is an obvious point of departure.
The the interesting thing with that is if we put it all up on these stilts, we actually disturb the land a lot less than if we built down into the ground. Doesn't look like it, because you can't walk underneath it in a green pasture type area, but yeah.
From a site planning perspective, Daniel, I always want to understand, you know, the sort of hierarchy of streets and whatnot. And I sort of have a feeling that this is a gated community based on kind of the way that it's more of a driveway oriented situation, I'm not suggesting you're the city or you are going to build a new public street. But I would hope to see as this thing emerges over time a strong opinion about that, one way or the other, we're gated or maybe we can not be gated and we can feel more like it's a public street.
Yeah. Trying to look at a little bit of retail on that west side facing towards the parking lot, having the potential of something that, you know, with the number of games and sports and activities happening out there, it's the one place looking for just a little bit of like a retailer or restaurant or something would be great if it could support it, but there's there's a lot of activity out there with volleyball courts and rock climbing.
Soda or beer, a little bit of beer, bike and trail.
Exactly, so it's not a lot, but I think it's one place that retail could could survive in this place.
Those are my comments.
It's great.
And one of the big plus of the park, having residential in terms of security, people there at evenings. Yeah, I found this place.
Right.
Yeah. Any other comments?
All right, no, I think we're good.
Great.
I appreciate the time and hopefully our next meeting won't be fifteen months away.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on, this is seven twenty-three South Front Street, is that right? So what, how would we like to deal with, Steve, want to run us through this?
If you're comfortable with it, I would rather just move on and sort out that way, starting to continue, but I don't feel comfortable with it, so let's look at it and see what happens.
I think we pull up five twenty-two, that's the that's the shot.
Yeah.
So we're going to be Let's just lay it out in the table.
Yes.
It's just where they go. So do we have a, do we have a plan that actually shows it or?
There's certain things where they think you can see them.
Okay, and north is a, right, so
Yeah, we do that.
So their strategy, I'm just going to say this out loud, was to hide them from Front Street by not putting them on the
Directly.
Small direct roof line and the the argument here, Daniel, right, or the counterpoint is you're still going to see
I think that some people more, more than we might want from the south.
Especially
My question was
The running.
My question was, you know, if this was a different, I kind of see it in both both ways. In general, the site, if you go to the pictures that I took at the bottom.
So from there, you know, in general, this would be more dense, there would be a building behind here. And other also would be a building beside of it, so do we sort of. I need to show our priorities this particular site because there's not buildings next to it. That's that was my question about that. And it's they're not be.
Right, this is another way to say that, Connie, that um our friends with the motel project have the benefit of a neighbor riding.
Yeah, exactly, but that's the reality of the site.
Right, I'm supposed to say that's the reality of the current situation, that's the best we can work with right now. In this case, the.
I mean, it's gonna be. And so, and just to, since there's no way else here right now, just to, because you you, someone had asked. I think it was you, Jeff, you had said something about, because we are not, our history guidelines, actually none of the five guidelines really. So what I did, and and you know, my significant major issues to to promote my followers, is what we have those. And so in doing research over the past year or so, more than that, um to try to have time to revise guidelines. I had found in Boise, Idaho, that they have the best sustainability section I have found yet. And so actually, what I put in here is probably what's gonna, somewhat in our revised guidelines, guidelines that I have, there are. And so. Preferred location for solar collectors, collectors and keep side grays, which this isn't a side gray. Locating collectors on the front portion of a roof oriented to the side yard is acceptable when preferred locations would not be able to minimize visual impacts. By setting collectors back to the side of the building. Uh so collector essential way that it can be moved and the original character easily restored. So that's kind of another way to think of it, and I'm not saying this promoted, I'm just trying to break the discussion about it. Is it, is this a temporary, can can consider it a temporary thing?
I hear a little bit of James Goodman that comment. I'm all put the waltz in the brick.
Mount collectors flush below the bridge line on a sloppy roof, attach solar collectors to a historic roof in a minimally invasive and versatile manner. Minimize visual impacts by setting collectors back in the heaves, avoid obscuring significant features or adversely affecting the overall character of the property. Exposed hardware frames and finding should have a map in it, which is something we have discussed before and be consistent with the color scheme of the structure. Uh collector collectors located on a primary street facing slope is not appropriate. So this is just a tough one because of the way sign it, because they don't like the same.
And the and the Tesla solar panel brief shingles aren't.
Sound like a bombing out.
Okay, well, where, you must start here, Bill, with your thoughts.
All over here. Skylight guidelines obviously don't, we wouldn't allow big banks of skylights, they need to stay individual. Like, like the Southland Hotel, individual skylights, so that that kind of bothers me here.
Oh, and these are bank, yeah, I see that.
They're kind of a big bank, but are you suggesting they could look like skylights if they were arranged differently cuz they're not. No, no, they're never almost like a skyline. Relating it to, yeah, our guideline. And the two up close to the front of the house are the ones that bother me the most.
Me, I think those are the least visible because of the open block. Because it's a really low slope.
But go back.
Like right there.
I guess it'll have visibility. So this house sits bad from the right of the way, none of those trees.
And there is a tree there, I mean, the tree can just fear.
I'm in my old age, I've become such a tree hugger that I have a hard time saying.
You're old, you're old age.
I'm forty.
I think we're all above forty.
Yeah, there we go.
I turned sixty-four last week.
But it's, I don't know, I just.
Can we support the.
Sure, can can we go back to the plan? Yeah, I I don't understand why there isn't a seventh panel on the south.
So there's an obstruction, there's something on there, I look at the same picture, there's something right there.
Like a, like a stack or something, yeah, okay. Because I don't personally mind the the bank because to me it's organized. It's, but the onesie twosies. Then just, you know, why's the little ad a little bit like the flea market? And make it least symmetrical on the roof.
Yeah, yeah, to that point, I wouldn't.
Say, make it be a bank.
Take these two, eliminate them. Put one of these here so that at least the shape is symmetrical on this symmetrical part of the roof.
Well, I think what we leave on earth there is that there's a a vertical. Pertinence draws a little circle at the.
The circle.
And there, there you go, right there. Yeah, exactly like that. We think that's a no-go zone for solar panels, it's not the area.
Because of something on the roof?
Yeah, like something bogeying up. A penetration or something.
Is this the brand?
Do you mean?
Okay, so you think it's the same site?
Yeah, I would.
Oh, you think there's a chimney, they're not showing. It's there from that other photograph. They're showing the chimney on the north side of the house. And that, you know, back of the house, not on the south side.
And probably a section, so then even get to your issue, Cynthia, which is how tall are they? Cuz imagine like when a sign comes through, we ask them for like the dimensions and detail. And we just let those other guys go by.
Right, put a bunch of those in the roof.
The client's trying to figure out what's on the roof.
But they at least, you know, this is actually kind of nice.
Yeah, and that's what it is.
On that side, they're not showing it. So it's not, did you write down, so what if we get a solar panel, we need a roof scape?
Yeah, or at least a high-res aerial like that.
So we can't find wider placing stuff the way that. Other than, other than the roof plan that's on here, not not.
It's missing the chimneys is the point.
Yeah, it's missing a chimney.
Yeah, it's not an architectural roof, it's a, it's a diagram for panels.
Yeah.
I think the jungle box is a little bit off scale.
Cynthia, I need. You know?
And so actually, moving that one panel over to the south side would not work. That was the point of that conversation. And we did, it took us about. Daniel was on it, but everybody else wasn't there. And you don't, all you all feel like the the three on the, from sort of near the front slope need to be gone or not?
Well, there was two. There's a pair of orphans, right? There's two in the back, two on the side front. And at some point, it doesn't make sense if you can't get your count up, you're really not using any energy, it's not worth the infrastructure.
So these panels sit.
It's a great point.
The panels sit two and a half inches off, plus the thickness of the panel, which looks like it's about inch and a half. This is scale.
I guess we're not really seeing what that box.
That's no worse than a Belloc skyline.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, that's why I wanted to have the discussion.
Yeah.
Are you knocking these in place in GB yet? Are you installing these in German village yet?
They have some in German village, but they're totally behind the historic house. They're not on.
But I mean, you know, I bet if you challenge us, one of us can see one of them somewhere from the street if we really.
Correct, but they're not allowing them so far on any historic structure contributing, so only only additions.
Of course they are. I wanna go back to the.
So far.
The addition, the addition question.
We're, we're all liking the idea, I think we all are liking the idea of putting. Putting them on the addition.
Addition, there's.
There's a big tree or.
Probably not big enough.
So that's blocking what I was just saying is that. Uh the back, solar rain backyard because they're waiting, look at those two buildings to the south, they're gonna have this part there.
And there's a tree in there.
We're, they're part of the lighting, like building between, so they'll always be open, so you can do that array in the backyard, leave the house. That's right.
First, spend some pride. I I hear you, I I don't, I would not, that's a solar farm in the backyard.
That would be consistent with the GB situation.
Would or wouldn't?
Would, it sounds like. It was, cuz they're not putting anything on a historic.
On the addition, right, yeah.
But they've been, they've been approved in pretty, and I think every district.
On historic function.
Three years. Uh not always on historic structures.
Well, but sometimes on historic structures.
Sometimes.
Okay, so that precedent is set then.
Yeah, yeah.
We wouldn't be the ones, we wouldn't be the first ones to do it, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
The big advantage here is the house is far enough back from the adjacent house. And the adjacent house sits right up on the right of it, it does effectively block the vision.
I guess when it boils down to it and like, you know, taking Daniel's tree hugger. I'm fine with a basic rule, don't put it on the.
Absolutely, I'm aware of the same one, I'm completely agree.
Yeah, otherwise.
And I just think they're committing the damage.
Yeah, otherwise.
And I think we should, if never the front, I think we should go to the addition wherever we can. And I think we should um try to minimize the use from the street view.
So are we doing the orphan children to board the front?
These are have to approve it the way it's submitted, or they have to alter their submitted.
Can we, can we say we prefer that they consider?
We can make a motion for whatever blocks, right?
Can we say that we prefer that they consider moving the two from one? You could say something like, in the absence of the applicant and a for the discussion, this is what the commission.
Didn't show up.
If you don't agree to this, then come back.
Shouldn't there be room for another one next to the JB on the far left-hand side of the drawing?
What is that JB, I mean?
Jungle box, it's out of scale.
It's a really big. Well, that's why we need something, something that shows the right scale.
I don't know, I know, but like the the other one is shown at the center line.
Yeah, I mean, we we shouldn't have guessed what they're showing. We shouldn't have to be guessing what they're asking. So I think we should just continue. I think we should continue with the request to them, and we'd love to see the two move from.
Here's the thought.
Yeah, I would, I agree, there's a tree back there, I mean, wouldn't it, that's a big tree, but the sign is.
Say what? Yeah, we get the evening sun, the block evenings, pretty harsh.
Yeah, like noon, three, four, except for in the winter, it's still getting some sun up there.
And it would be lower, so from the neighbors parking area, you're gonna, they're gonna be much more visible.
And they got room for like eight of them.
What about if, what about if, this is probably blasphemy. Allow them to eliminate that chimney and they put more on the back and eliminate the ones up here. Of course, that's limiting, it's removing an historical element.
I know. You're gonna get kicked out of the neighborhood. I'm hopeful.
Yeah, it's an icon of us, you know that.
I was gonna buy an.
You can't allow that.
It's already cut down.
It's already been severely altered from its store. I don't look to me like they're bringing more than two panels on that.
We don't.
But you might suggest. Alright, so do we need a motion for a continuance?
So.
Second, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So Connie, the motion has not the front, has considered the addition, has considered the back. If there's no interest. It's removed on the chimney? No, I wasn't ever gonna do this to you. I'm not a heretofore.
You can kick me off with this right now if you'd like.
This is like a whole commission right now.
I committed to Jamie until fall, and I said beyond that, I'm not committing.
I'd like to move, the meeting is over.
You gotta do the whole. Alright, I hear a motion, so moves. Second, second, all those in favor are saying aye.